Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Rockingham Select Board Meeting.
First order business is to approve the minutes of November 7th of Pine Street at the commotion.
And we can be approved the minutes of November 7, 2023.
We have a second?
I have a second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes on November 7th, 2023. Any further discussion, corrections, deletions, omissions, et cetera, et cetera? Seeing none, everybody's in agreement, say would say aye?
Aye.
Although opposed, nay, motion carries. Additions to the agenda for routine administrative management and repressing management that will require ratification if you are meeting. Future meeting, we have two. One will be a description of the survey that's been going in process and a update on the solar ray in the pit. Anyone else have any hints?
No, those are the same, Peter, thank you.
Oh no. Hey, public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Anyone going once?
Sold.
Move right along, where it's gonna be, meeting time, good. Management report.
So a few things, so we're finishing up leaf collection, even though we stopped on the 15th, we've been around a few more times than. So folks from now on, please take your leaves to the recycling center. Don't leave them back out in your clear bags.
Thanks.
They've done a couple more courtesy runs through town, but I think at this point, we're ready for full winter operations. So appreciate if you do still have some fall cleanup at your house, that, you know, we are open at the recycling center to take your materials there. The parade of lights is coming up, it's Saturday, the 9th, I believe, 5 o'clock. Which is a fun event, nice community event, so hopefully folks can make it down and visit some merchants and let's hope the weather cooperates so people can come out and enjoy what's a nice event. That's a couple of weeks from now, since we won't be meeting, we'll meet again on the 5th. So certainly we want folks to come out and enjoy that part of the holiday season. The sidewalk project that we started on Pine Street, we didn't finish all of the work, but we did finish up to the work that we had anticipated. So we removed forms and sort of cleaned up this week. So that work will be suspended until the spring, the contractor will continue to hold his price on that. The other project work that we still don't have completed, asphalt sidewalks in Saxis River. The asphalt plants are staying open an extra week, but in talking with Jeremy at Springfield, he still is not caught up on his regular street paving. So it does not appear that he's going to get to our asphalt paving in time to get that sidewalk work done as we hoped. He's also holding his price, so we'll have that, this holdover work for the spring as well. And then we are done removing debris and material out of the Williams River area and then around the Fartinsville Bridge. I think for the most part, it looks successful. We have a nice pile of gravel that we will hopefully crush next year and potentially use as base material. If we decide to do the Route 121 paving for areas, we have to do street improvements out there on 121. So it gives us a nice pile of material to work with. And I've been out a couple of times, Sue goes out quite a bit, and I'm sure she could give a better update, but it certainly looks good, the work that they did. And I think it's definitely going to help sort of the way the floodplain works in that area. So overall, I think it was a good project and very pleased that we could get it done and hopefully alleviate a future problem.
It brought it back basically to pre-Irene, so. Even more so because the river dug a lot of the stuff out of the river as well that we didn't do. We just took the subdated pile down.
So it's a good project in a couple of ways. For us, certainly, we can use the gravel in other projects, so the material that we took out will not go to waste. And then we are going to apply to FEMA, considering that that's debris removal to protect the structure. So we're hopeful that they'll see that as a reimbursable expense and hopefully we'll be able to get that paid for as well.
Scott, your computer has a dial line box there.
Oh. No, we don't want that. There you go. Okay. That was it, I'll say.
That's it.
Thanks, thanks for that.
Then we went off. Okay, we will interrupt the regular meeting and go into a quick board of liquor control meeting for an application for first class restaurant brand license on 111 Acton, Rockingham Street. Hopefully get this right, it's KG Dos Banderas is the name of the company applying, so I'll take a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'd love to be approved, we, um, liquor license, KG Dawson, yes.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Motion made in second to approve the application for liquor control for a restaurant, first class restaurant brand license at 111 Acton Street under the name of KG Dos Banderas. Although in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Although opposed, nay, motion carries. It's my round for soon, Peter. Okay, now back to regular board meeting and application for use alcohol on municipal property. That is in your packet, it is for Bellows Falls Polies. Information is there. Insurance certificates, et cetera, et cetera. So we need to make a motion to either approve or disapprove this. So take a motion.
I move to approve the use of alcohol on municipal property for the Bellows Falls Polies.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Motion made in second to approve the application for a use of alcohol on municipal property for the Bellows Falls Polies. Any further discussion? Hearing done, although in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Although opposed, nay, motion carries. Now, request to fill vacancy for cemetery commission. In your packet, you have a letter resignation from Kyle Dawson and a request from Ann Manor McLarty to take his place. That being said, we get a motion to appoint Ann Manor McLarty to the cemetery committee.
I move that we appoint Ann Manor McLarty to the cemetery committee.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Okay, motion made in second to appoint Ann McLarty, uh, Ann Manor McLarty, excuse me, two main names here, to the cemetery committee, not commission, but committee. Although in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Although opposed, nay, motion carries. Okay, moving right along, presentation of draft operating budget, library looks like Ian's up.
Where are you wanting to be right here?
Sure, sit right down here in the hot mic.
This is a star tamper here.
We'll turn the switch on when you get in.
Should have brought more cookies.
Would you raise your right hand, please?
This thing's wired in this.
We don't have the stuff in front of us, so you'll.
Yeah, so, and the reason is that the library board of trustees hasn't finalized the budget. So it's December 5th, that'll happen, so what I'm going to give you.
Just copy sometime along.
As soon as they're.
So.
All right, so as I was saying, the library board of trustees is midstream in the process. We already met in November and they agreed to the principles that we were laying out, that I'll lay out before you briefly tonight. And we have a meeting scheduled for December 5th to approve the final budget. Obviously, some things still are in flux during the month of November, I just got some numbers relatively recently, and so we try not to lock it in too soon because we've got a problem with that. But before I get into all those, I just want to give you a quick building update. You know, after I fixed the locks in the building, I was overconfident, so I thought, you know, I'll give the lights a shot. And so, you know, they were very odd, I talked to Elijah about it, they would go out for like a day or a week or a month or months and then come back home again, it seemed very weird. So we figured a ballast were failing, you were suspicious about that diagnosis, but, and so anyway, I decided I was just going to go for one. So I went up and I pulled the bulb out and there was a sticker up there that said 32 watt max. And I was kind of surprised by that because the bulb I pulled out was a 42 watt bulb. So I bought about 60 32 watt bulbs and now all the lights in the building work again. So, you know, I know, right, it was about $150 worth of bulbs, so we were looking at replacing fixtures at cost of upward of $150 a fixture.
Yeah, it's a lot cheaper than.
A lot cheaper to change the bulb. There's some joke in that about how many librarians.
One guy to hold both and four to turn the light on, okay.
Two years from wondering why they don't work, right? Exactly, that's a very existential problem. So we're going to keep trying to chip away at that, but obviously we have other things like painting nicks outside the building, fixing some mortar and some other things that are, you know, disintegrating. There's also a water problem, both an intrusion and when the addition was put on in the late 60s, early 70s, like basically they didn't account for where the water would go and that's been causing some problems. So we probably need to do some water re kind of, you know, gutters and stuff, just move it away from where it's coming down right now and causing some problems. Anyway, you know, that's the long-term kind of thing that we're thinking about and the things that frankly I can't get up. Nobody wants me to get up on a ladder and do that kind of stuff for sure. So, but for FY25 budget, I'll start by giving you the bottom line and the top line. As we discussed with the library board of trustees, the bottom line is that there's a minimal $1,531 increase for FY25 over FY24 budget. So it's virtually the same for more than $400,000 budget. But the top line, literally, the tax appropriation to accomplish this, we're requesting or we're including right now an $8,000 increase in the tax appropriation. Takes it from 379,250 to 387,250. I'm going to go through a little bit why that's the case. But for context, there has not been a tax appropriation increase for the library budget in five years. And FY19 is the last time there was a tax appropriation increase, so we've gone five consecutive, just the years with that one. $8,000 represents a 2.1% increase for the tax appropriation for the library. So that's what we're working with right now, but as I said, we're not, December 5th is the day we'll lock this on the plate. The reason for this increase is that we've adjusted the library generated revenue downwards by about $9,000. I'll give two examples why we've done this, there's pretty much five or six reasons like that. We've revised our income from investments down by a little more than $1,000, so that's one ninth of it right now. Also, we've revised income from the library's annual book sale down by 1,500. We've had it at 3,500 for the last five years, we've never made more than about 2,000. It's kind of ridiculous that we've been suggesting that we'd make 3,500. So what we're doing is trying to be more realistic about what the actual revenue is. It's not really fair to the town to have enough data to predict the figures more accurately and not be doing that. So, and then giving, so that's about the revenue side, so that's the shift that we're looking at. And given the increased cost of, you know, everything, you may also be wondering how we limited spending to such a small increase, that 1,531 dollars. I mean, because we've been searching for savings, you know, for two years, so where could we find any? And here's where we found some to keep the spending flat as well as the revenue. We realized that, I've been doing a lot of analysis of all the available data, recent salary survey that came out, the annual report that all the public libraries of Vermont supply data to. And I've realized that our weekly employee hours are slightly elevated relative to our peers. And so the FY25 budget for part-time salary line and for the wages, 11 hours per week reduction over the past. So we're reducing the part-time and consequently, that's producing the costs to the town for that part-time. We had to make some adjustments, both the merit adjustment and then when there was some opposition, so the full-time has actually gone up some and that's eaten into some of that. But we still have realizing savings from that part-time reduction. And despite that reduction, we still will have the library open the same number of hours that it's open right now. So while we're doing a slight reduction in the number of employee hours, we're not doing a reduction in the open hours of the library. In fact, our plan is, once we kind of let all this settle through, is to go from being open 10 to 1 on Saturday to 10 to 2 on Saturday. So we're actually going to be open longer, despite the fact that we're reducing the hours some. So that's not, there's not an impact on that. And then I just wanted to update you guys that we did sign a three-year agreement with the union for the library employees, all of the part-time and full-time employees that are at least 19 hours a week, except for me, are in the union. And it's, and we did a three-year contract with 3% for the current year FY23 and then 2% for FY25 and 2% for FY26. And we believe, the board and I believe, that the library wages, other than this change rate that made for meritorious and then were correct. And we had to hold the line pretty hard because we believed that to be true in the face of the negotiations. After the negotiations, this very recent salary survey of public libraries in Vermont was released, it's a 102-page report. And to me, and I told the staff that, this information, I told the library board this information, it completely bears out that the salaries are appropriate for the library. And so we were right in negotiating the way we negotiated with the union agreement. But it also means that we're at kind of a pivot point with the library where we're trying to make more resources available to all the lines other than just the compensation line, which is quite large for the library, but we want to invest more in the program and we want to be able to address the building needs and all this kind of stuff. And so, so that's basically where we're at. Right now, we have, for the first time in five years, a tax appropriation increase of minimal amount, but we are making adjustments under the hood, both to offset some of that, but also because they're appropriate based on all the information that we've been able to gather. So that's the big picture of the whole thing. And within the rest of it, it's pretty, pretty much in what we've been doing all along.
So what's your loss leaders call, so-called for your revenue, where did you lost the revenue?
So between that, so a lot of it's illusory, right? I mean, it's like the fact that we were projecting that we were going to get 3,500 from the books sale, but we never did, so that's some of it. I'll give you, because I have some information. I'll tell you where we're expecting these other things to happen. Oh, so we had, I told, 15,000 for the miscellaneous fundraising book sale, direct appeal, we never came anywhere near that, so 5,000 of that. So 1500.
There must have been a big one, maybe somewhere that.
Yeah, that's the big one, that's the one. And so it's, we weren't, we simply weren't doing the fundraising or getting the fundraising results. And again, I look back seven years, you know, so we looked deep into it to see, I needed to know, pre-pandemic and everything, had we been somewhere that we had fallen from that we should be trying to get back to? And the fact is, no. You know, we just had always sort of had more aspirational goals for the revenue than what we're realizing.
So how about other state or town memberships? So if you guys look at that, I know there's an article even in the paper or someplace, I saw that one of the other towns has increased theirs.
Well, that's a good idea, I mean, I can.
Yeah, that part's out, yeah.
We do charge that, but you know, we should, I should, you know, peg it and make sure that we're charging the right amount. Because people, people happily pay it to get, it's a great library, so they're happy to get it.
That's it.
Yeah.
It's another way to get revenue, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I think they went up to 60 from 50 and then next year they're going up to 70.
Yeah, they went up about.
We're at 70. But, but maybe that's not right. I mean, you know, we know that the tax appropriation, you know, is, you know, is high for this town and stuff. And so we want to make sure that what we're charging non-residents is equivalent to what we're, you know, in some way into what the residents of things support the library.
It's also really good.
It's a really good, yeah, we get people from Walpole, people from, you know, so we're happy to take that money. And, and it would be great if it were more. Yeah, yeah, so we do it, but it's a really good place to look at.
Do you know how many acton cardholders you have?
You know, I could look, I mean, in FY23, we, we made 1,305 dollars for non-residents. So I mean, divided by 70, it's about 200, am I doing that right?
About 20, 30.
20, 20, yeah, yeah. It's not a huge number, no, it's definitely, I would guess it's in that vicinity of 20 or so. And we could advertise, you know.
I think maybe we should.
Yeah, it's a good, it's an interesting idea.
I think we should, yeah. Do you know that our library is so big and all this stuff and it's only 75 dollars?
Well, the other thing is that people like at 80, you know. Yeah, it's a bargain to anybody.
I think you should, I really think you should.
Well, the thing, and the way, one of the ways to do it is we get a lot of out-of-town people to come to a lot of the programming that we do. And so we can have information there because they're in the building, yeah, always mention that. That's an excellent idea.
You really, you really should, because I think a lot of people would give that a different.
Yeah, because even if, you know, if we got another 500 or 1,000, you know, it makes a big difference.
Yeah, yeah.
Friends of the library, what do they contribute?
Well, I mean, I would guess five grand a year is probably a pretty good average. It's significant, you know, and all, the nice thing is all the money that they raise comes to the library in one form or another because they don't support anything else, they're the friends of the library. And so we, you know, I go down to the welcome center when they do that, which is a big fundraiser, they make 1,600, 1,800, 1,900 dollars when they do a bake sale down there in July, down at Gilford, yeah. And I go down and spend time, and that's all that kind of stuff. We're having a, I should have mentioned a gang, we're having friends, we're having a holiday party on December 2nd at the library that everyone should come to. And the music and food, not just these awful cookies and everything. Those are good cookies, do you want to know where they're from? Ikea.
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 Did you have to put them together?
I did. But the insertion manual was really clear, you know.
They got these little pins in them, I see.
It's all plastic tubes. So, I mean, honestly, any ideas people have for us to generate more revenue, we're all, that's great, you know. You know, to go from like thinking some of these lines, I don't, I want to be careful what language I use, but mildly inflated accidentally, let's say, you know, to, and, you know, being realistic about it. But if we can fill some of those back up or find different lines, that's fantastic, okay? And we don't charge, another one of the things is we don't charge late fees anymore and it's almost no one does, it was determined that they're really, the people who need the library the most are the ones that stop coming because they owe like 70 cents in late fees. And so even the New York Public Library that was getting millions of dollars in late fees stopped charging late fees. And for two years, the Friends of the Library filled that budget line. So we had, I think it was 1,400 dollars, 1,800 dollars, something, and I asked them when I first started if they would carry that until we could take it out of the budget. And they did that, which was great, but you know, we can't.
People sometimes just don't bring the book back and they're fine.
Both, yeah, yeah, I mean, you hear the great stories about the person who brought the book back from 1922, right, yeah, yeah, but you know, that's. We don't make it on CNN for some reason, there's something wrong there. But, oh, and one more thing I should mention because, you know, it's dollars, but we are in the midst of a $6,000 digital literacy grant that AT&amp;T gave us and we've been advertising it all over the place. We use the money to buy 11 really nice laptop computers that the library thinks is key. And Pamela Johnson-Sferlock, our new reference and historical collections library, reading classes free for the community and all sorts of different things, like, you know, how to navigate the internet, you know, how not to get catfished, you know, how to use Word, how to use email, all that kind of stuff. And, you know, people are trickling in and stuff, but she's going to turn that, after the grants over in December, then we'll start doing things like how to use the library catalog, how to use Biblioplus, which is our streaming video service, how to use Libby, which is the streaming audio and stuff like that. And so, you know, I think these are really good ways for us to connect in the community and that was all paid for with that money, just like the Libby effect, which is great.
Good job, your programming has been great.
Yeah, really.
These you guys come up with for programs.
It's only going to get better.
It's really great.
Yeah, Pamela is a force of nature, so, yeah, she's really going to be there, between her and me, I think, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, and the only other thing, I know there was some federal legislation to support just libraries, kind of like where we got ARPA funds. Was there anything that the library was able to apply for?
So the application for that all got delayed because of the floods, but they're expecting this month, well, I think maybe not this month, no. They were hoping this month to make those open, but I've already actually submitted, you know, we had somebody come in and do an assessment to put some private rooms in, which is what one of the things was focused on. They were looking at funding telehealth, remote education, and just sort of private meeting spaces and stuff. And we don't really have those things in the library right now, we have big spaces, people are happy to use them, but we like to have big things happen in them. And so we got an estimate and they ran a process in March or April where I put all that information in and then it got, really got delayed because of the floods. And they, you know, a lot of libraries were really badly damaged from the floods and so the Department of Libraries was really focused and has been on that. But I have met with them a couple of times lately, actually, we, the Department of Libraries were in a meeting after our library about a month ago about the fiber program, which is really cool. All the libraries from Southern Vermont, you know, came here and put their department of libraries around this meeting. And they were talking about that and they said soon. They said next month and that was October and now we're in November, but soon.
A lot of things were delayed with grants, but that's great, it's still out there.
Yeah, it's still out there and I am very confident we're actually going to get that because it's a bullseye for us, what we're trying to do.
Give us space, where are those new rooms to go?
Yeah, I mean, you know the library, so the space where there's tables beside the fiction section that is on the south wall in the main bay is pretty not used very efficiently. And so the thought is to have three rooms, this is what we specked out. In the southeast part of that room, to have a larger room that would be up to like five or six people. And then the two beyond that, one in the center part of that wall and one in the far part, that would be more like for two people or whatever. Because part of this is so a single person in a private space can connect to a doctor. You know, sometimes people just live in rural areas and don't have internet capability, so here they have both the private space and internet capability. And obviously the privacy that's necessary for having things like medical visits is really, really important and so that's why that funding is available.
Or they don't have a computer that will allow it, it has to be updated computer.
Exactly, exactly. So, I mean, the, the infrastructure for the internet we provide, which is probably the most robust in the area, is paid for by the state about 10 years ago through the fiber connect program. And so, and there's, that equipment will be upgraded at no cost to the town sometime in the near future. But I can't talk much about that yet, that's still, that's still developing, yeah.
Impression just off the track of the budget here, your cookie turned box up. It's slowly degrading into rust and I, because I saw one of your elves out there taking books out and asked her, she said, you have a new box down there, but can't they even get anybody to put the new one in place?
So it shouldn't be a puzzle, but it's a puzzle and here's why. That box is anchored into bolts that were sunk into the concrete pad at the sun. And the new box that was ordered has a different layout for the anchor bolts. And so I'm not that smart and so it stymied me for a fair amount of time until I, because I was like, now we got to dig up the pad or cut the bolts. And then I was like, you know what we have to do, this just occurred to me as I was changing all the light bulbs. We just have to drill new holes in the base of this thing, because that's the obvious, yeah, thank you. I'm very slow with this, but that was obviously.
Just put the box together and just go that way.
But part of this is that that box was, was ordered with, so during the renovation, there was apparently like a landscape layout that was configured and desired that just never made the final cut of anything. And so there's a lot of, well, you can't just put the new box where the old box was because then you don't change everything else. And I've said over and over, we're not changing everything else, we're just putting the box in, but the bolts don't line up. So I'm going to get, am I going to drill it myself? Probably not, I won't tell you if I do. And we'll do it off a library property and how it applied right now, but somebody's going to drill holes in that.
Yeah, you can drill holes in that, in the box and the box match the other ones, they can just slide right on the bolts.
Slide it right on the bolts.
It would be to get the bolts off of them, nuts off of bolts that are in there, they may be rusted.
I've already done that, that, that part isn't a problem.
That sounds like something a wonderful rotary would do, yeah.
Somebody just, I couldn't even tell you the group just replaced, I don't think it was the rotary, replaced the bench after.
That was a rotary.
Yeah, fantastic, yeah, so now we got a new one, which is great, yeah, so.
Ian? All right, thank you very much, appreciate your hard work and we'll look forward to a copy of that when we can get one finalized.
December 6th, December 5th it'll be finalized.
This sounds like a good one.
I'll block it down on December 6th then.
Appreciate it, thank you all.
All right, number four is, we have a big spotlight here, presentation recommendations for social services, lovely review committee, that's a mouthful and a half. We have your information of your recommendation sheet and a couple of explanations, we don't need to get into specifics there, but if you could just kind of give the board a little bit of rationale for how you guys approached this and.
I thought the other two guys would be here, but they figured I could run with it, right? So we went, we did all meetings, we have second opportunity for one agency. You can see by the spreadsheet, we, we've gone through these and all of this is the final information. You can see the three, well, there are five altogether that had larger requests. About three of them have had increases, you see how much that is. We didn't put an answer by that, but the truth is, we were, we're fine with funding them with their increases, except for the two that you have, the two additional explanations. Were significant requests, asks, and we thought with, we hope that you see our recommendations show that there's some reasoning to reduce the amount of data posted. That's pretty much it. The explanations were, we got kind of into it in order to make sure that you could see why we did that, but of course, it is up to you and any agency that would like to change the answer that you come up with, have another bite of the apple in March.
Okay, we, you know, as I say, what our plan is, is to post this on the website so people can have it, because it is a. because it is a public document, wanted to reach this board. And we'll put the spreadsheet that I made up above from the other towns so they'll have that information to look at. You know, the, the funding that the other towns provide to the same organization. So you can have a comparison across to see where we sit compared to everybody else.
We did the meeting. The last meeting was our, was our session where we talked about what we thought would be appropriate. And it didn't really take us all that long. We were kind of had finalized it in our minds before we got to the meeting. And so it made it that simpler to go forward to you. And I, and I know we've talked about increase, it's increasing every year and how you, what you decide to do with it.
I'm trying to understand the chart.
Yeah, go for it. What do you need?
All right, it says PAC TV.
Oh, what was it? But then take it off. You guys, you two both decided.
PAC TV is on your professional service.
So that's somewhere else. Okay.
Yeah, it was listed to us, but...
Another one that's going to be taken off of there is going to be a project. We'll come off of that and go under community funding.
Oh, okay, all right. So what you're, what you're agreeing to or disagreeing is the increase, right?
Right, but not with PAC TV doesn't, is not happening, right?
We have no information.
Only the two, the two that you see that says see attached. The others, we did agree, I forgot to write, go ahead and bond it with the others. But I wanted to show you on the chart that they increased from previous year in their ask. But we did not have any significant reasons to say no.
Okay.
We thought they were pretty much justified. And one of the agencies, we didn't say anything about it. It was to me like they ought to ask for more money, but it's so small, but...
So the mover, they wanted more money, but you're only going to give them three hundred until they...
No, 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 no. That's the increase line. We didn't necessarily disagree. We looked at all their paper and their documentation, but they have gone up three hundred and seventy-five dollars from previous year. Their ask is higher. It's up to you what you decide to do about that.
We'll, we'll go through that when we get to the, that's part of it.
Those are just the, you'll see increases.
But this will give you an idea of what they were asked for, what they received and what their recommendation to do with the funding.
I mean, you've got something to say about visiting New York City.
Yep.
I saw Dr. what other towns were doing for the same organizations. When you compare them, is it by per resident of the town? Is that how we compare?
All of them had different formulas on how they calculated that. And because, and some of the formulas didn't make sense when they said they had been level funding for seven years. What we know is, we know easily that fluctuations in population have gone up and down. So the formula, but they all had different reasons for the formula. One of them is based upon the amount of uncompensated funds that they was, they don't give back. So they figure it out from there. And that's how they determine what they ask us for. Others used population. Some of them simply used the number of people they'd served. It's based on some cost factor. They weren't, it wasn't exactly as formulated as I would have hoped for in all cases. But, you know, they're each individual organization. The other thing that we wanted to express, which we didn't in the paperwork, is that there is a lot of redundancy in organizations. Everybody has their heartstrings pulled by social service organizations, right? But many of them are doing the same things.
And you know, going through this Bible, because the yard went through...
That's Megan's copy. Mine at home is huge.
Yeah, well, I think it's pretty much the same as, you may have personal notes on them.
I have notes all over mine, yeah.
All right. Eventually I might get to yours.
Should be the same paperwork.
But going through that, there's a lot of them, like you just said, that there's a head agency and there's about five of them that come off of that agency. They're also asking funding along with that same.
As a matter of fact, one of these agencies here, Senior Solutions is really a pass-through of funds. Like the Agency of Aging and the Meals on Wheels program. They get the money. They distribute the money to the other organizations. So that's their job.
Everybody's welcome to look at this when I get done.
The RSVP agency, I just wanted to point that one out. RSVP, we just have this list. I used to think they were the welcome wagon, but, I mean, that's all I knew about them. In the course of the meeting, I realized that it's the Retired Senior Volunteer Volunteer Program. And they do an awful lot of work for, as you can see on the list, a small amount of money due to question.
Yeah, that's what I said, reviewing this, you can see which ones we're getting the bank the buck for versus those that are just, you know, that are really overloading the cards. And we don't get a lot of return back.
Without balance from some communities, because we looked at, we did look at other communities' numbers. One of the things we ask every one of the agencies is, what other towns do you serve? And what do you ask of them? And some of them didn't ask other towns, although they served other towns.
Right.
For giving. And some of them asked way less than, we took the lion's share in many cases with organizations.
So, what is the Great Falls Justice Center?
They provide things like help with youth in our community who get in trouble. They, what is it, diversion, court diversion. They help them out with legal issues that they may need. If you get a DUI, they help them do all the things they need. There's many of that, along with some adult work as well. There's a bunch of that. There is an amazing amount of work that the programs that we actually have. And it should be in the paperwork that has, such that there's a lot of assistance that they do.
Right now, so.
All right. Good. I don't know what some of these groups think of this help that we have.
They're all in there. So they do give you a description, but like I say, it's interesting reading. Okay, anything else for Deb? As I say, we'll get into this a little later and once we confirm numbers in the budget, we'll put it on the website so that, all the document will also be in the town report anyway. But if anybody wants to speak at beforehand, we'll get them on the website. And I personally would like to thank you guys for doing the work you did because...
It was very enlightening.
I know your, your, your first fear was it may be off or not because, you know...
And you know, that's always a possibility.
But we have to, every year we should have to do it. We're, we've got to look into changing our process, Tom, to as the paperwork accent, the board has the same stuff plus the explanation or the definition of social service agencies from the state statute right there, so.
As you've already seen, some communities simply throw a number up. They just make a decision in the list, is this a subject to donate? Everybody gets a thousand dollars, something like that. Rockingham, for many decades, has been very generous. But, and it's not necessarily without good reason. There are a lot of services being used by a lot of people.
Yeah, so. Okay, anything else?
I just, process question. Would select board have an agenda at one of the future meetings to review this and make decisions?
Right.
And if we, the question of overlap, how would we, will we just have to hash that out?
Yeah, basically.
Okay. We'll have to make a decision by the time we finalize our warning, because this will all have to go on.
Right, so it's going to happen next...
So by January, right, we'll have to have it pretty much, at least that portion will have to be decided.
And we can look at that list and say, you know, okay, we agree, this, 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 these funding and then they can dump it into the budget and work there. And then it's also, we have a question on whether it's after we finalize.
They were hoping to review the warning on the...
Pretty sure that probably eighty percent or so of these are going to be the same as status quo. But it's just the other ones. But don't forget, caveat is that even if they get neglected or reduced, they can also come back to town meeting and stand up with a petition and ask for, you know, their regular funding or additional, which is why we need to look at our process too, which I sent you the Western Mr. Process and the...
Did you make a note of redundancies that you can help us?
We did not, but in the, we didn't list it as a, in the report because it wasn't our, it's not our area to do. But we found a lot of that in the, in the review. So, and if you look through the paperwork, any of those agencies, they handle a lot of the same numbers of things. And there's like some portion of town, or some portion of towns, that they're all getting because who knows who to go to first, or second, or third. And it's what they hear. So people will use the agencies they find, but they, but the devices at some point, they would converge and put themselves together, you know, regroup. And they would actually probably get better back to the buck if they did that and provide better service.
Yeah, and just as, in terms of competing for grants and everything else.
Everybody's putting their hand in the same pots.
Yeah, I know. Adults play their roles, you know?
Right.
That's it. But everyone, to everyone, it's a sacred thing. It's one they've been doing for many people contributing to, like donations for years. They want, they want to see those services. But maybe if they, if some of them got together, but how to make that happen, that's up to new organizations, really.
Well, I guess you start squeezing them.
Well, but one of the reasons why we do the review every five years, you know, to go through that.
And just to suggest, you know...
I mean, as I say, the process...
And hearing us here on PAC TV, that, you know, perhaps some of the group, the organizations would be better served by getting together.
Yes.
And combining.
Yes.
And, and the community too.
Okay, Deb, appreciate it. Just passing on my thanks to the, we had a gentleman that, that served on the committee.
Lot of work.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're glad to be done with it. We were glad, we knew it was important, wanted to share it.
Lot of work, but it's kind of, as you say, it's enlightening when you start digging into it.
It is.
See what's going on.
Thank you. You have a good holiday.
You too, guys. Thanks, yeah. All right, let's go into the presentation of major capital projects and debt schedule. There's a, before we go too far, there's a Scott has provided us with a proposed budget schedule. So you know what the date may be coming up and who's going to be on the topic.
Just try to hear guys, the, the highlights.
And then we get into the next sheet, which is, as I just said, the major capital improvements.
So we should probably start with that long-term debt schedule because it sort of tells a little bit of a story that I think is important, that sort of then dovetails into the discussion on some of the major capital. By no means was it my major capital memo, everything. It was just some of the larger expense items that, you know, are potentially items that the board might have to bond, or we have substantial grants or other sources that we'll need to tap into in order to make those projects complete. But this schedule is important for a couple of reasons. You can see here, we're in an interesting sort of three-year window here. We've got a couple of larger notes that are going to be paying out in the next two budget years, which is good news. And they drop off in the fiscal twenty-six year. So you see a substantial reduction in our principal and interest payments. But what it does do is a couple of these have sort of balloon payouts at the end. So you'll notice on a couple of these vehicles especially, the, I think it's what? The bumper truck and the twenty-ten, twenty-nineteen, just regular truck. You'll see that both of those have fairly substantial principal payments in twenty-five, so... So the, the point of it being is when we had looked at our, our overall debt ratios and we had talked about our commitment to paving and commitment to some of our major projects, we balanced some of that with our ARPA funding. And also then the board took a position that they wanted to balance some of the ARPA spending with additional grant spending, so we were able to leverage those dollars as well. It gave us a window here to start to pay down some of our, our longer-term obligations so that we can free up some debt that if we have to go forward and borrow, the board can feel comfortable they can do that and not have these major impacts on the tax rate. A couple of issues that, you know, again, the borrowing environment right now isn't wonderful. You know, everybody's aware of interest rates, so that impacts our decisions, obviously, as we go forward. We're hopeful to see that maybe regress and come back a little bit before we have to go out into the marketplace and test out what our municipal bonds might be in this new market. And there are some options for us to look at shorter-term notes that might not necessarily have to be, you know, the longer-term obligations like we've had paying out on the town hall, paying out on the library. We're going to have some, some obligations as we go forward with our portion of the cost of the depot bridge. And again, we were in a good position there because of some of the federal funding, where they took away our share of the construction costs. But we still have other costs that are associated. We're still working on trying to get those finalized. And I still don't have all that information, so there's still a couple of pieces there of that that have to be finalized. I'm hoping to have VHB and the engineers coming back sometime in January so we can talk about some of the open items, the lighting on the bridge, the final design on the rails, the issues about the contaminated soils. I still don't have an estimate on what our contaminated soils portion might be. And then if there's any other opportunities to offset some of the costs that we've talked about, the potential loss of the hydro with coordination of, of construction with that. That's still an open item, still in the discussion. And it's a huge unknown for us, obviously, when they started talking about some of the costs that they're not able, the, the utility offset costs, that they're not able to supply in the demand portions when, when they're required to feed the grid. There's other offsets to that that are also potentially available to us. We might be able to get waivers. So we would not be responsible for that. So there's, there's a lot of discussion we still have to have. The fact that they had to delay that project another year, I think, helped us in terms of this schedule because now that, that gives us another, at least a year to eighteen months, where if we continue with our current process of paying down our debt, keeping ourselves, at least if we're borrowing, borrowing within the parameters of what we see falling off. If you look at the fiscal year twenty-six schedule, where you can see we have, you know, almost a three hundred, you know, in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars worth of capacity to pay additional principal and interest in that fiscal year going forward. So you have some capacity that's building up. So you have some options there. But I think the key here that we wanted to just make the board aware was that you do have a couple of these payments that will be ballooning in twenty-five. So twenty-four isn't necessarily an issue. It's pretty consistent. Slight pay down from, I think, what we paid last year. But then you'll see there's a little bit of a pressure point in twenty-five and then significant relief as we go forward into twenty-six. And our fire feasibility study and why, part of the reason why I think part of the recommendations in the board's conversation about that are so important is you can see what these decisions do in terms of how it impacts all of your financial decision-making. Because these, these trucks and these long-term notes are expensive. And the costs of some of the vehicles that we're looking at have doubled in price since, you know, since the last time we put together the equipment replacement schedules. So there's significant pressures. You know, the board will have to take some serious looks at how do we accommodate some of these requests and maintain the public safety services, which are critical. We're not trying to decrease the amount of services we're offering people, but certainly you want to try to look at what's affordable, what's reasonable. And in today's environment, education, you know, educating the public as to, here's the big picture. Here's all these factors. Here's what's impacting us. And now we have decisions to be made because we're all taxpayers at some level. We all have to decide how do we want to allocate these resources. So that feasibility study feeds into this bigger picture as we go forward.
Scott, the, will the TRIT study be discussed at the TRIT board meeting, the results, or will it be in?
No, we're not. We'll have some updates and we'll have some additional times of when some of the more materials are coming. But we've gone past some of the hurdles that got us delayed on the implementation phase.
So the recommendations of that survey could affect the acquisition of equipment, right?
Well, we did not make any proposals for any equipment acquisition for the next budget year. And in a minimum, I wouldn't think anything would happen until the board had a chance to go through the, the, the recommendations from the study and then have an opportunity to sit down and look at that and what that might mean. You know, on top of the other obligations, we're going to start talking about the other major capital. So a lot of these numbers are large. Hopefully, they don't scare people. There's a lot of good news in these numbers too, so I don't, I don't, it's not all gloom and doom. The industrial park drainage, that's an ongoing story. As you guys are aware, we've had a couple of washouts from some of these storms. The long-term fix to repair the, the drainage issues and also then to eliminate the washouts that occur at the railroad and then down as it empties into the river, we're looking at about a two million dollar, almost a two million dollar project. The good news on that is we have already gotten some state funds already secured. So that's a bit of good news. We are waiting to hear from Federal Highways on a second piece of grant that would help offset the total project cost. We've got some emails back and forth today. We've been submitted for a while. One of the frustrations in some of these grants is they don't, they don't keep to, as Ian even said, they don't keep to these strict deadlines, right? So you apply for these grants and then you wait, and you wait, and you email and you wait. And you ask, do you think you might have it done? So you apply for these grants and then you wait and you wait and you email and you wait and you ask, do you think you might have it done by December? Well, we can't tell you if it's going to be December. It might be January. It could be March. So there's just no, just no timelines on some of these decisions.
Since Route 5, a lot of the water that comes down through there passes under through around Route 5. Is that why we would qualify for, uh, Federal Highway money?
There are specific grants that, that relate to stormwater drainage off of these, these state routes. And that's part of the reason why we're asking for this. But it has a material impact on our industrial park. So it also, there's some economic development pieces to this and maintenance of jobs. This one particularly, we've been in touch with our senators and tried to keep them abreast of where this is and asked them to speak to some of the folks in Federal Highway about how important it is to the Southern Vermont area. You know, these are some of our higher-paid jobs and probably our industrial base, so to speak. So these are folks that we really want to try to keep here and, and maintain.
So this is Chroma and?
So basically everybody up in the industrial park, Sonex, Chroma, Whitney Blake, um, a couple of smaller, um, people there in some of the smaller buildings. But it's, it's over four or five hundred jobs up in that area. So it's significant for us. Um, the Opera House roof, it's the ongoing story. If you come visit the third floor, you can see how bad we need the roof replaced. Um, we, we had to patch through the summer because it was so wet. Um, so all we've done is basically chased the problem, you know, from one area. So we stopped the majority of leaking that was occurring in the Opera House and in the production spaces, but it's now migrated and it's farther on the other end of the building.
Where your offices at?
Closer to where that third floor meeting room is. So that's why you see all that additional damage up there. The membrane is just failing. So the folks that are, the granting, um, people from Wyndham Regional are coming on the 11th of December to do our onsite. We're one of the first, I think, onsite visits. So I'm hopeful that puts this person line, if we, if we get approved, to get the first round of funds. And, and that 500,000, we've had updated estimates, would pay for all of the drainage improvements and the membrane improvements that we need. So that's a significant project for us and we're hopeful that can be, that can go forward to be done. The windows and the brick repair on this building, that sort of finishes the outside envelope. We had started the window project. Our contractor got ill, uh, didn't recover. So he only got about half the job done. So we have to go back and finish the rest of the windows. And then obviously we have, uh, brick repair on this building that needs to happen as well to make us watertight. And then we'll include, uh, some plaster repair in that as well. We are asking for a Paul Bruin grant, which is historic preservation grant, um, which would help offset some of that cost. But that will probably also require some additional bonding in order to finish that project in time for the 100th anniversary. So we put that number in there as well.
Did we, uh, do we have any of the money that originally they set aside for that window? I thought I saw in the budget. We haven't spent it all. I thought it was like 30 or 40,000 that was sitting out there for window repair that we had.
There was some money. I think we used that on the, um,
I think it got eaten up.
On the reinforcement, on the steel beam.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I couldn't get on the line on that one, I'm not sure.
It'd be substantially more anyways to get that work done.
Right.
Or 3,000 seems.
I mean, every bit helps, but I think we had, we used that as part of that, that roof, uh, reinforcement project and the lighting project. Uh, 121 is an interesting timing process because we're still trying to work with our neighbors in Westminster about both of us doing resurfacing at the same time. Obviously, we would pay the contractors, but, you know, each community would pay their portion of the work. But there are two undersized culverts there that would need to be upsized and should be done prior to doing the actual repaving. So we'll have to come back and tear up the road at some point in the future. So that grant application is coming due shortly. And you'll probably see that here coming up on one of these future, um, meetings as well.
Those culverts are on our, obviously within Rockingham.
Yes.
Is there one in Westminster's?
Those two depths are in there, or Skibo Road is there, one big depth. And then, closer you get to West, the secondary, there's two of them there. That, uh, you know, where the trench comes down from the hill by the yellow house there, the old ranch house, and it goes across the road there. Those two depths there, those.
Are they failing culverts? They're just undersized?
Yeah.
They're failing.
They're failing, but if you're gonna do it, you might as well go to bigger size because it's gonna take more.
Right, right. So.
Has Andy been in touch with the Westminster, uh, highway guy and?
We've had a few conversations. I have not spoken to their new town manager, so at some point I will, sort of bring him up to speed on some of this. I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, he's in his first couple of weeks, so I didn't want to, you know, get in, we'll get in line. I'm sure he'll have enough to sort through. But that's an important project for us. Um, we're also hoping to reuse, like I said, some of that gravel that we're potentially making out of the, out of the materials that we dragged out of the river to help with some of the base reconstruction. Because there's some sections of 121, we're gonna need a complete reconstruction. It's not just a mill and pave. So that's going to be an extensive project. We're also hoping to apply for our paving, um, grant for that year as well. So we're hoping to get an additional offset for that. So that's a major project. We, we take that one up and, and have all those pieces come together.
At what point do you think he'll start to get some pricing on what, where that could potentially, you know, ballpark figure?
The culverts are the first piece, so I'm hoping to get that first. And then once we get that, the reconstruction will follow. So, so it will be significant. It will probably do, most of your saving budget probably have to borrow as well to get that done. Metro, we've had a hazard mitigation grant submitted for a substantial period of time. It's another one of those continual follow-ups. No response, no, no time deadline in terms of when that funding might be awarded. So as you can see, it's a substantial amount to replace those three culverts there. It's almost a million dollars. And, and two have already been replaced previously. And those two functioned and actually didn't blow out in the July storm. So I guess the, the good news is the engineers, when they design these things and they're put in, they work. So the tough part of it is they're expensive. And as you can see, that's a substantial amount of money.
Are these box culverts?
These are box culverts. Church Place School Street, we're still working on the transportation alternatives implementation grant, but we've been talking with the school. They want to do some work. We want to do some work. Um, there's an opportunity to apply for some money, which we're going to try to do that. Um, we've probably seen applications during the next meeting for this, for the TA grant for that portion. We will see if, um, it's a little premature because we won't have finished all of the, all of the work around the pedestrian improvements. But I think enough of this is, is reasonable enough where I think we might be able to get it approved. Been talking to the people who spoke to already at the state level. So we're hopeful that that can, that can work out. The train station, this is a, the Federal Railroad is the Chrissy Grant, and it's an acronym for something, and I never remember what the hell it is. But it's about a million eight. And that's the, really, the biggest piece of this brand. Once we get to that portion and we're close, we're, we're almost done with all of our, had a great conversation with our attorney this evening. We have a draft lease agreement. We also have a draft purchase and sale agreement. So we're hoping to be able to get one final review from him. And then if it looks good, try to bring that up to you possibly for your December 5 meeting. Excuse me, for your approval. So that would kick off then the next round of funding that we've talked about. The big piece here is we still have some unfunded work that'll happen. Gary Scott tranches of money, we have Northern Borders money. We have downtown transportation fund money. Um, we've asked for some CPG funds. Um, all have been authorized. The big one, like I said, is a million eight is the Chrissy Grant. That's the biggest one. We also have some cleanup grants that we've asked for from Wyndham Regional because we have some removed, like there's some asbestos and a few other things that have to be done there as well in the building. So all those pieces are funded. But we still have a gap in that phase two that we might need some additional bonding for. And then the final big piece on, on buildings, because as you can see, there's a theme on it through here with streets and buildings, is the Meeting House. There's a couple of additional tranches of, of money that they're looking at for their second phase of work. So we've sort of secured everything. We think we're good on the first phase, which is the monies from the Save America's Treasure. Some of the ARPA funds and some of the money is already allocated. The second fund, uh, second phase will be some private donor work that they're working on. Cesquixote Tenio Grant Funds, which Walter is applying for, and potentially some Bruin Grant Funds. But he'll need some additional matching funds to get that phase two work done. So that, those dollars are still being developed, but it's a pretty, it's a pretty consistent number, that 150, in terms of additional support that they'll need outside of those other sources to finish that second phase of the restoration. And then finally, the two big ones that we are still working our way through, the two big bridge projects, Depot and Vilas. I gave you guys updated copies of those two, just so that you have them in terms of the scope of the projects. As you can see, um, substantial. Um, the, the, the Depot Bridge is roughly a 14, almost 14.8 when it's all in. Um, with the scoping, preliminary engineering and right-of-way, that portion is our responsibility, some portion of that. So that's almost 3.1 million. I think we're responsible for 20% of that, I believe. And then to balance all of the construction, which normally was 80/20, is now 100% on, because of the, uh, one of the infrastructure bills paid for that portion. So that we were not responsible for that additional funding of that 11 million. So 20% of 11 million would have been a substantial amount. So that was a, a huge benefit for us for that piece. And then finally, you can see, this is the updated Vilas schedule. It has not changed, as far as I know. It's still fully funded. The issue is for us again is more, if you look at the funding portions, the, the portions that are, our Vermont would be a portion that we would be, a, a piece of that we'd be responsible for in the early years, 26. It's not a lot. As you go out past that, when you get into the construction pieces in, in 29, the Vermont portions, um, in 29 and 30 raise up to, what, 355 is roughly the cost in 29. And then additional five-something in 30, and another 311 in 31. So then we'd be responsible for a portion of that. Um, all things, you know, all in that, that project is still over 20 million. Still in the tip, still funded. So, you know, sort of one of those good news, bad news scenarios. And then the last bridge, which we really don't have any information on, is the Bridge Street Bridge. And we had applied for a regional designation for that bridge a year and a half, two years ago. We were one of the projects that was considered, uh, to be put forward. It did not get funded past the regional recommendation. And talking with the Wyndham Regional folks, they think they're going to do another round potentially next year. Will apply again for Bridge Street. Again, we have no idea of the type of funding or when these decisions will be made. But somewhere in this window between the beginning of the Depot project, the beginning of the Vilas project in 26, we're hoping to fit the Bridge Street Bridge somewhere in this window between 2025 and 2030. So how that fits or how it's going to be accomplished is still somewhat unclear. But that's, that's probably the greatest unknown that we have going forward. So.
Questions?
Yes.
Um, we can't close on the train station until the funding stack is, is set or not?
No, the biggest issue that we had was lease terms, because we had four entities that we were negotiating with. And they were changing the goalposts multiple times. And we had to give up basically everything. So it was not really negotiation. It was a beating. So we just accepted our beating over time. And then I guess they beat us down to the point where they thought, okay, that's enough. So the lease is now in shape. The other issue was we couldn't finish the purchase and sale until the lease was approved because we wouldn't have had access to the building. Because we don't own the right-of-way. So that's why it was such a, a delay. They have, so we're, we're talking with the attorney again. We're trying to do a joint closing. So with the same closing, we do the purchase and sale, we would also do the lease agreement at the same time. So there wouldn't be any concern about getting access to the building since we don't own the right-of-way or have easement granted through the right-of-way technically to the building unless we own it.
So in the past, when people walked in, at the train station, they walked over someone else's land?
It was never defined. Train station had been there for so long and some of the improvements had been made, they had never been surveyed. So the railroad and the DOT and the town had all just taken it for granted. These were where the lines were. And it turned out it wasn't exactly where everybody thought it was.
But has it re-resurveyed?
It's been re-surveyed. So now we know. But again, we didn't want to buy the entire parcel, if you remember. Part of the conversations were that whole property is contaminated. They don't have to clean it up because it's railroad property and it's exempt. If we had bought the entire parcel, immediately it would have been out, it would have been required to be cleaned up and the cost would have been astronomical.
Yeah, astronomical.
Yeah.
The state of Vermont owns the land under the train station?
Yes.
And they have leased that land to the railroad?
But Vermont Rail Systems, which is a state agency, has some obligations. We have two operating railroads that also have rights within that right-of-way. So.
That's crazy.
There's a lot of competing interests. And it was not a, like I said, and the railroad is not an easy partner to negotiate. And they have an active rail, um, fairness to them. It's a very active rail station for them in terms of transfer of freight and that freight operation. And they're very protective of that right-of-way. So they were very aggressive as to the types of things that, that they wanted us to do or not do. That's why we had such a hard time with simple things like the shed roof on the building.
Right.
So with all that being said, I think we're at the point, though, we're feeling pretty good about closing in December.
He needs cookies. Try and stay awake over here.
Cookie break, Chuck.
She's, she's so upset by the bridge cost.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna sugar up here.
Do we have a sense yet from the state how they're, I know this Vermont's going to get a significant amount of money from the, the federal, uh, transportation, um, pile of money. But do we have a sense yet of what they're planning to do with that? I can't remember how much they said, but I remember, it was quite significant.
3 billion, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big number.
3.1 or something like that.
Something like that. That's what's six in my mind. But do we have a sense yet of?
No.
They're planning with that?
And there's so many unfunded projects in the rail that I think they could eat that up just on positive train control, just that alone. For, for the freight and to try to move stuff at a higher rate of speed. That was a couple billion just to do that. So, I mean, it's insane. The numbers are insane when you get into some of these. So, lots of big projects, lots of big numbers, lots of moving parts. The good news is Vermont is unique in this respect. Because we're such a small state, we have pretty good relationships with our higher-level officials, our federal officials. And so it's easy for us to get in touch with them and say, hey, can you advocate for us? These are important. And they do. They're very responsive. Other states I've worked in, I can call Chuck Schumer in New York till I'm doing him a face. He's not coming. He's not calling me back. It's just a different level of, different level of access, put it that way. Not, not thinking against Chuck Schumer personally, just saying.
I want to thank you. This is an amazing overview you've given us. And it's a three-dimensional chess game. So how do you keep it all straight?
Well, a lot of good work. Alyssa dropped her crazy. She, she, every time I come to the office, a tear starts to roll down, roll down the cheek. Oh, God, what are you doing? Stop, please stop.
What are you walking on, Sam?
She doesn't welcome me with open arms. That's for sure. But so, she does. She works hard. It's hard because all of these things too, once we get these grants, it's wonderful. But then the compliance pieces and the recording and the single audit and keeping track of all the, the requirements that the feds put into all of their, you know, all their bidding. It's just, it's really, it's a very difficult process. And it seems unnecessarily complex. And it's frustrating because they hold us to very strict standards as to when you can apply and how you can apply. But then they don't give you any sense of when, when they're gonna make decisions. So these things go open-ended. Like some of these grants we've talked about, they've been nine months, some of them up to almost a year. And no indication as to when they're gonna give you a decision, which is really frustrating.
How bad, how bad is the Bridge Street Bridge? How many more years do we have on that?
It's weight restricted. Um, I would say- I would say it's not horrible, but it's certainly in a position where if we start bringing additional traffic through, once the Depot's finished and once Vilas is finished, it will have to be repaired in order to carry the level of traffic that we think might be necessary. And that opens up lots of other discussions about how do we wanna,
With the traffic.
Keep the trucks out of the square, and how do we wanna try to, you know, good news, bad news, right? There'll certainly be more activity and more opportunity for people to come to downtown, but it also has some real challenges to it, too.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, and that bridge is going to be a very complex and challenging one to rebuild, I think, because of the site. The location makes it hard. If we think that Canal Street is bad, that's gonna be worse.
I know.
Because you're gonna have people trying to get in the post ops, you're not gonna be able to leave. Let's get a walk down the side walk, because the parking places are gonna be gone. And probably gonna be taking up that parking area over there for staging. You know, it's, it's gonna be fun.
It's a more, more restricted on space.
Yeah.
And it's closer to the, uh, the generating stations.
Yeah. And that's gonna be the danger when they take care of the park, that's the old one. So that's gonna be, you might have problems where we are now.
Yeah, that one's gonna be a real, real challenge, because it's so close to the downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to work again when we get into perjury licensing. We're gonna have to use, uh, we're gonna certainly need a lot of cooperation from the hydro to make that happen, because there's no other way to do it. So, all of these things are gonna be complex and expensive. And you see the costs on just the Vilas and the Depot Bridge, you're looking at $35 million. We got our train station, and that's approaching another 4 million. The money that will eventually put into the meeting house is probably in the neighborhood of 2 million. So this building, when we're all set and done with the membrane and all the other work that we're doing, is probably close to a million. So, you know, deferred maintenance is a, is a bitch. It's expensive all the time, and, you know, it's hard on, I appreciate the board's efforts of trying to catch up, because it's not easy. Like, these things take decades to get to this point. It's not like these decisions were made, you know, last three or four years. But you can see what it does in terms of cost and complexity, and it's really, it's a puzzle. Sure.
More fun for, pass for. Okay, let's move on to let us report the regional police new studio. There's a information tagger from Windsor County Sheriff.
The sheriff has been trying to put together a pilot project that he's looking for the legislature to help with some funds to see if they would help us do that specifically for our region. You know, we have sort of a unique issue here, because how diver, how spread out we are in terms of population. You know, we're not the same. Obviously, there's policing issues all through the state of Vermont, but I think ours are a little more complicated, just because of the fact of how we are set up. So I think his proposal is a good one, to see if there are some ways that we can look at this on a regional basis. I think it's helpful to have the legislature involved. We're not Chindon County, we're not even Montpelier, you know, central Vermont. We just have different problems. And I don't think sometimes that the larger picture gets up into the state capital conversations. They don't quite see some of those distinctions. So I appreciate the efforts of the sheriff, and I think it would be in our best interest to try to participate in this process as much as we can going forward, to see if there's some opportunities here for regional solutions to some of our concerns. Our residents have been, our rural residents have been asking for more and more police-related activity and services. The sheriff has been very cooperative, in fact. Even though we have a very limited contract, they've been able to produce, based on the reporting that they do, very specific information that I've been able to distribute back to folks. Which is helpful. I think sometimes just having the information, sometimes people's perception versus, these were dates and times when there were people, and this is what they were, you know, in your area, is helpful. Doesn't answer all the problems, I realize, but it's at least been helpful for me to be able to talk to people and give them some information that's concrete. And I think the contract that, that we have signed has been beneficial. This sort of takes that into a larger discussion, and this will be the first, I think. And many of the conversations we're gonna have to have about regional services, whether it's EMS, whether it's police, a whole host of other issues.
So Scott, he's recommended a letter be sent, and would that come from the select board to our?
It's what attached to the.
I just, I just drafted a quick one, just to send one up. So, it's just something that we can send forward.
All we need is a motion to.
So if you just do a motion to approve, then I'll send it off to the sheriff.
Are you gonna use that somewhere, you got there, change the date or something?
Yeah, I'll just change it up. Yep.
Yeah, that being said, um, without further discussion, can we get a motion just to, uh, have a manager draft a letter and, uh, and sign it on behalf of the town?
I know we've been authorized, the manager to draft, or send the letter that he has drafted to our legislative delegation for the town, that what's going?
I think the sheriff is gonna aggregate the letters and send them up to the legislature.
All right, so then this goes to the sheriff.
Give me a second.
A second.
Okay, motion being seconded, any further discussion, questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, man, motion carried. Move on item seven, motion for addition.
Before we move on, so, um, this, the, what the sheriff has been doing in, with the contract, and will we get an update of that before we go into our discussions on our budget?
Yeah, I can do a, I can do a total activity report for the entire time period, if the board would like to see that, so.
One of your neighbors wrote to me for some reason, and I got information from Scott, send it to her, and you probably know who that is.
So I can get into the reports and just come up with, you know, where they were, dates and times, I can print out one. So I would do that. We can do that for the meeting on the fifth, I'll just update that for that.
Okay, I think Bonnie, you're up, uh, explain to us, there's a survey edition here that, uh, what's gonna be happening. So I'll let them guys take the lead on that.
Yeah, so I gave everybody, uh, that, uh, that's a printout of the survey that will be online. The only difference is I stuck a town seal on that. We had to pay an extra hundreds of dollars to put a logo on the survey, so. But that's exactly how the survey will read. You can see all the, some are checkboxes, some are yes and no, some are field, where people can leave a comment. And as soon as everybody is totally happy with it, we can start going with getting it live. The only thing, we, we hit a glitch with the postcard. We wanted to send a postcard to every registered voter. And we've had some real struggles trying to get a list of registered voters with complete addresses. But we have an idea, we got something from Alyssa, that there must be such a list somewhere.
There has to be a list, because we get ballots for them.
That's what she said, yeah.
Yeah, we, we've asked Kathleen a couple of times on this, and, and she sends us these lists that have no zip codes on them.
Voter lists, it's what you're checking on, maybe it's a check-in column, you know, for voting.
There are four zip codes that, that it sounds has, you think of Saxon's River, some through Chester, some through Bellis Falls itself, some people get their mail from Westminster.
Yeah, the Little Heart of Hill area and that area, yeah, from Westminster.
So we've been trying to puzzle that out, but if we can get a, a real list that really has everybody's actual address, and, you know, the post office box where they get their mail, we could get going on having the postcard printed and mailed. I kind of, the timing I'd like to do is, um, when we know that a postcard is going out, that's when we will, um, put paper copies, like the ones you have there, at the library, at the senior center, and at town hall for people that don't have internet access. And that's what we can start posting on all social media sites and get it on the town website. So it'd be good to kind of have just be as simultaneous as possible. So the people don't hear about it this month, and then get a postcard next month, and wind up taking it twice. You know, so if we can, we can get all to happen sort of at the same time, that would be optimal. So the idea is just to get, see how many responses we get. And my understanding is, the select board and town manager can change the day and the time of the annual meeting, but we can't, we don't have the authority to move the voting on the warrants to the ballot. That has to be approved during an in-person meeting, right?
Right.
So my hope is that regardless of what our survey responses tell us, it will, it will foment awareness among our voters that we need to do something, you know? If you really want it to change, you've gotta come to the next town meeting in person and vote on that.
Well, it's starting coming tonight.
So this is the thing.
To see the town mechanics at work. So, you know, I'm one of the people who've not been involved, and I, I know that this has been coming up. And I find myself wanting to complain about a couple of things, and instead of complaining, I figure I should contribute.
Thank you.
And, and come down and see how the mechanics work and, and get to know the people that we elected to do these things and be a little more involved. So this is one of the exact reasons I'm here, is to be a part of it.
If, if you do have complaints, the easiest way to handle those is send an email or something to the manager, let him know you've got a problem, and then if he can't solve it, it'll come to here. So, and if you have, nine times out of 10, he's got an answer. You may not like it, but he's got an answer.
It's easy to complain, it's, it's always.
That's right.
It's a lot harder.
We don't want to put a lot of more stuff on him, because then he asks for a raise again, we don't need to go through that.
No matter, as much as he deserves one. Yeah, so, you know, the thing is, if, if you care about this, you've got to start to pay attention, you know? And we were, we were aghast last year that less than 100 people were in this room to vote on the articles in one.
Certainly not the majority.
Not, not nearly.
3,600 registered voters, 3,700.
Right.
Yeah.
And it was that article I, I had read that, you know, led to me being here.
Yeah, and it's, it's really, it's dangerous. It's a dangerous situation, a handful of crackpots, if, if there were.
Excuse me? Are you calling us to show up with crackpot? Well, you know where your votes are going.
And dominate the whole thing, because we don't have participation. So if people, you know, were trying to find out, do you really not want to come? Or is it the wrong day? Is it the wrong time? Why aren't you coming? What are your thoughts? Because a group of us have to get together in person and vote to change it. Otherwise, we will forever be having these warrants determined by 25, 50, 75 people at the most.
It's the way it used to be, I don't know how we got to where we're at. It's the way it used to be, I don't know how we got to where we're at.
Photorapathy, basically, I mean, if you go to, the Union High School budget is a, is a prime example. People up there in the high schools, and they pass that budget that night, at the, at the budget. And if you, 20 people, I, I guarantee you, at the most, have attended those meetings, pass them. At the 12, we're 12 million dollar budget for the high school. And nobody else shows up. And the only way you can vote on it, and, because I've been tempted to get that voted on on a strong ballot, and, and without any success going to the legislature, I finally gave up, because they don't listen.
Right.
So, the only way you do it is vote down your local district budget, but that affects all the other schools in the town.
That, it's.
Not just that, that's the only way you can it, because they, when the budget's adopted at the high school, it's all assessed through all the different school districts, including Westminster, Rockingham, Craft, and, and, and all ones that belong to the high school, they all split up the money according to your population, so. But that's how they do it, like I said, I think the last time they had 15 people there, the last, last few meetings, $10 million.
So that's what we're trying to do, right? That's what it's all about. Get people to be aware how important it is to at least attend one meeting, so you can vote on whether or not you want to keep it the way it is or change it. You know, personally, I like the in-person meetings, but only if people come. If people aren't coming, it's not a good idea.
So I, I drafted, you can see there's a text that you got of a postcard, the postcard text. And that's signed by all of us on the board, so I want everyone to be comfortable with the wording here. And we want people to participate, and there are four different ways that people can participate. So we want to get as much, as many responses as possible. We plan, Bonnie and I plan to present what comes back to us at, um, at the town meeting. So that's an important thing, so we have some data. Instead of just anecdotes and opinions floating, or at least we have some idea. I mean, it's not gonna be great data, but it's gonna be better than nothing. So that's the plan, and so I hope everyone can look at this text, and they're comfortable with it.
Yes.
Okay, good.
It's got my name on it, even though I'm an idiot. Crackpot, yeah.
There's a line on the back for crackpot.
This board has never had so much fun. Something, something's wrong here. Okay, so that's, um, as I say, an educated voter is your best voter. And if you don't come to the meetings, I mean, look at what's here today. You're, you're two people, three, four people, there's only two people in those are pressed on Zoom.
It's horrifying when I came down here, I was like, I don't want to be on this.
So, you know, then, then you don't know how many of our watching that, you mean, watching the meeting.
I was surprised.
It's true.
Yeah, so.
And another suggestion for people is that at the minimum, you can at least read the minutes of the meeting afterwards.
Yes, you should.
And it's very brief, but it will give you at least a small snapshot of what happened.
Then if you have questions, you need to come to the meeting and ask them.
Action.
All right, done. Now, let's go, there is a, Scott passed out a big pamphlet here on the solar update for the lease, I think it is.
So if you remember, Novus is a company that we did the original solar lease with. And then I got a phone call from Kendall Sustainable Infrastructure, which apparently now has taken over the lease from Novus, which I guess they sell these things once they've put together their projects. So they are now the ones that will be the people that will be doing the next round of the, of the lease. They've got a couple of amendments that they've asked for, not in terms of area, but there are some term, renewal terms that they've asked for changes to, that I think the board needs to talk about. And then a couple of other documents that they need to record as well with the lease. So I just explained to him that we would certainly bring it to you guys this evening. It was too late to try to do it for this meeting, and then we would talk again with him. He had the seventh, but he'll be on the fifth. So, just wanted to get this in your hands.
More bathroom bring you for you guys tonight, through that.
There's a little pages here.
A lot of legal.
Yeah, it's kind of, any things that you regard as problematic on the lease, that, that changes?
Well, the one thing that bothers me is in the original lease, right, we have three options for renewal. Two that are at their option plus one mutual renewal. And right now, they want to have, um, all of them at the tenants' option, so not at the mutual. So, not sure that that's in our best interest at this point. I'm not sure why, they need to explain to me why that would be in our interest to have that.
And the financial piece remains the same?
Financial piece remains the same. So we have received our initial $50,000 payment, but the other payment terms from the, for the years going out are the same. So, but that's the one piece I think we do have to talk about.
So with the attorney, who did give us advice on this renewal?
I'd asked him to do the train station lease first, but then we'll get this second. So, yes, we'll make sure that he goes through it as well.
And there is no action needed tonight, correct?
Just wanted to bring to the board's attention and just make sure you had it.
At what point do they want a decision?
We'll bring it back on the table, so, it's your next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, let's move along here to review and approve orders, bills and warrants. Take a motion, please.
Motion to approve orders, bills and warrants, second.
Motion to approve and seconded to approve orders, bills and warrants. Any discussion, correction, any? Seeing done, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed, name, motion carries. And they'll be coming around with signatures, starting the other to my left. Agenda for December fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting?
So we'll have a couple of budget specific items. We'll do the general fund. We'll have the highway department budget and the presentation and the pavement management report updated and a discussion. So we'll have that on. The activity report for the sheriff, which we added tonight, the solar lease update, which we added tonight. We'll give you an update on what's happening in the pit with the closure and some other issues in the pit. And then we will have at least one grant application for culverts for one twenty-one, the brick application, I believe is two by eight, so we'll have to have that on for the third.
So on, on the fifth information, you're going to go on an executive session, you mean executive matter now?
I would think we probably will have an executive session.
From what we discussed earlier today.
Yes, on the fifth, on the fifth.
Okay. Okay, agenda items for November twenty-eighth, next week, the joint board meeting.
Couple of things, I've asked Paul to come. There's been a lot of updates on the statewide level. You remember, we talked about the statewide reappraisal process and they were going to do a report and they get back to everybody. Well, the legislature is sort of can that whole process and are now going a different direction completely and going straight to statewide reappraisal. And it's kind of been a, a little bit of a, I think the board needs to understand what they're doing. And so VLCT has some information I'll share with you. I'm going to ask Paul if he can come and give the board some updates because it really is a substantial change in approach from the last time we spoke and a little aggressive. So I think it would be in all of our interests to have that conversation on the twenty-eighth. We'll update the fire feasibility study where we are, some of the challenges we've had, and hopefully have a schedule as to when we're going to get the results and have conversations about that and the recommendations. The Windham Regional folks have been doing the sidewalk study for us. They are not going to be ready for the meeting. I'd hope that they'd be able to present on the twenty-eighth. We're talking with them this week, they're not going to be at a point where they're ready to present. So we'll certainly talk about some of the general stuff about sidewalk and some of the general stuff that we've talked about with pavement, but we won't have their full study done, probably not until the first of the year now, from the information I got this week from them. So they're a little bit behind on that. And then Ridwick had asked to do a brief presentation, so we'll have them on there as well, so.
What's the, what's the topic of their presentation?
I think it's an update since the last time we spoke about the, about the housing, infill housing and sort of that, next steps on that. So those are the ones that I have for now.
All right, if anybody has any, they can zap with myself or Scott and I'll see if we can get it on either one of the two meetings. Okay, I guess we're ready to go into other business. Lajos, how are you?
I went to the gathering, the VLCT gathering of select board members in Townsend a couple weeks ago.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. And it was really interesting to see what other towns are struggling with and some of the problems that we don't have that they do have. Really, there are some of those.
That's good. Everybody's got a different time.
But it was great to hear, to connect with other select board members, just to get to know who they are. And the idea of Vermont towns operating as silos is we got to get beyond that. So I think Scott, you're doing a great initiative in cooperation on policing. We've got it with our bike head grant, you've got on Route one twenty-one paving. So I think that's the way VLCT sees that as a really important way. So the fact that we're cooperating with Westminster, for example, is really a good, good thing and part of a trend, so.
Yeah, I know, when I was doing that work for the regional, when Ann Gold and I went for like seven or eight different towns and met their town managers and some of their select people. We've got problems with, some towns have bigger problems, they have a lot less to work with.
Right, yes.
You know, we've got big problems, we've got, we've got a lot to work with here. We've got a lot of people, a big budget, some towns just, God, it's unimaginable how to even pave the roads, you know?
Yeah. It's great, you asked for two things, like what are you really happy about for your town and what's the challenge? I said, we're happy they got a great manager. That was the thing I said.
Don't spread that.
I know, they're going to come.
That's why they get away from us.
And I said, I said the challenge was that we have three fire departments for fifty-two-hundred people.
Yeah. That must have rose, I knew two eyebrows.
They were like, what?
Okay, only thing I have, I think they've opened one twenty-one up both lanes now for the holiday. They were moving stuff all over the place and trying to stop traffic and everything today, but I've noticed everything, the lights are on, so it's, it's a, we're a straight run now, so that's good. Bonnie, Sue?
John, I'm set, thanks.
All right, that being said, there's no need for executive session, I would take it.
All good.
So that's the case, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I do, will you adjourn?
Second?
A second.
All those in favor would say aye. Aye.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.